So we're ready to go? Do I just start talking?
Yeah.
Click on the on, do you?
Yeah, right, everything's on, yep.
Okay.
I'm a little nervous.
I can't hear. And you can't talk loud, because otherwise...
Is that a microphone?
Oh.
It's your six o'clock.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town of Chester Annual Meeting. It is 6:00 PM on the first day of March, and we are now ready to hold our town meeting. This year, the annual meeting is different. We're doing it by Zoom. There's also Sapa, YouTube, a lot of different ways to participate and/or view this. Be patient. We're all new to this, and everybody will have a chance to ask a question. And there are certain steps to take, which we'll remind you of. First of all, everybody will be muted until you've had a chance to be called on to speak. When you speak, please make sure to give your name. If you want to speak or ask a question, please use the raise hand feature and wait to be called on. Raise hand can be found in the reactions tab.
It's one of my pages.
You can also use the chat function. We'll try to monitor that during the meeting. So again, be patient. We hope this is the first and last time we have to conduct this kind of a meeting as an annual meeting, and it will be an experience. The town meeting tonight is going to be a presentation of all of the articles on the warning. We'll review each article, and we will have discussion presented and information presented by members of the town staff and our town manager, Julie Hans. As we move through these articles, you will have a chance to ask questions. There is no opportunity to debate. There's no opportunity to vote. So this is primarily a presentation of the articles and an opportunity to ask questions. Tomorrow is the election day for our town meeting. In fact, tomorrow is the annual town meeting day throughout the state of Vermont, and the election will be held here at the town hall. Voting will be held at the town hall from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So you might need to participate in person unless you've already voted.
You're number one.
So with that, we will begin our town meeting, going through the warning. But first, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is over on the stage.
Oh, there we go.
A pledge to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Present tonight, we have certain members of the town staff. First of all, we have three members of Select Board at the table. Arne Janinus is the chair. Jeff Holden and Lee Gustafson are members. The other two Select Board members are attending by Zoom, and so they too, as will all the Select Board members, be able to participate and respond to questions. Julie Hans is our town manager, and we have our town clerk and assistant town clerk, Deb and Amy. And we're delighted that we're able to be here to socially distancing, have this presentation and opportunity to present an annual meeting. So the warning of the town meeting goes forward. The legal voters of the Town of Chester are hereby notified and warned to meet on Monday, March 1, 2021, at 6:00 PM via Zoom for a virtual information meeting on the following articles. Voting on all articles will be by Australian ballot on March 2, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Chestertown Hall, second floor. For those who have picked them up, we do have our annual meeting report. We're not going to certainly spend much time other than going through the warning, but the report is full of information about activities in the town, budget, and all these matters that are being presented as part of the warning. I'm going to go through each of the articles. We'll go through the financial articles, which are 2 through 5. I'm going to read each of those articles, 2 through 5, and at the end of the reading of the articles, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Julie Hans, who is going to present information regarding the budget. So we'll begin with Article 1. To elect town officials for the ensuing year is provided by the public laws of Vermont. This election and vote will be held tomorrow here at the town hall, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Article 2. Shall general obligation bonds or notes of the Town of Chester in an amount not to exceed $250,000, subject to reduction from the receipt of available state and federal grants and aid, be issued for the purpose of paving Lover's Lane Road and Popple Dungeon Road, the portion between the new road construction and the dirt road. Said paving to be financed for a term of five years. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to raise $3,342,887.1 to be paid to the Chestertown Treasurer on September 15, 2021, to pay current expenses and any part of the town's indebtedness. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to expend from the Capital Budget Reserve Fund $887,249.36 to be allocated as follows. $18,750 to be used for the purchase of air packs for the fire department. $10,000 to be used for purchase signage for the town. $200,000 to be used as a match for the Depot Street sidewalk grant. $41,000 to be used to purchase a police cruiser. $146,610.80 to be used to pay previously approved equipment loans, and $470,888.56 as a transfer to the bond plan. All is indicated on the Capital Budget Program schedule unless any grant funds that may be received. Article 5. To see if the Town of Chester will vote to approve the purchase of a dump truck for the Highway Department in an amount not to exceed $130,000, less any trade-in. Said dump truck to be financed for a term of five years, beginning in 2022, as illustrated in the capital plan. These five articles are going to be further developed by our town manager, Julie Hans, and I will turn this over to Julie once she's finished, as there may be questions. If you can observe the protocol for asking questions, to speak or ask a question, use the raise hand feature and wait to be called on, and importantly, state your name. Julie Hans.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to share my PowerPoint on Zoom so that you can hopefully see it. Yeah, let's get us to a slideshow. Well, maybe hang on. Yeah, let's just not run under it. Hang on one second. Well, we'll just go the way we have it. So this is the presentation of the 2021 General Fund Budget. So I kind of did this as a more of a narrative for people who maybe if there were issues hearing me, you could kind of read along as we do this. But I figured I would start with the kind of the highlight of 2020 for everybody has been COVID. The Town of Chester was no different. It was a tough year. Once we realized that there were going to be many potential impacts to the town's budget, we began reviewing our current practices, making some changes internally to try to limit as much spending as we possibly could. I want to thank the department heads all for that because that was a direct result of them and... I'm going to try to, actually. You can give them any, thank you. Hang on one second, just give me a second because I am going to try to fix this because I know you can't read it. Just hang on, give me one quick second. Seems like the PowerPoint of town meeting never goes without a hitch.
When you're in a...
I will carry on the tradition.
When you're in a 200, 200-year-old building, it's kind of doesn't, you know?
I will carry on the tradition. Hang on here. I think it's because I had too many versions open. All right. I apologize, I had this all set, my share net. Okay. Now I messed it up. Can't see my screen, I can't get my share screen back now. I can't get it back. Hang on. I may have to go out and come back in. I can't, it won't come back up. Hang on, Amy. All right, Amy, if you can let me in. Did you put your seal right? Did that? There we go. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so COVID obviously was no different to the town. Once we realized, again, like I said, the potential impacts that we could have to revenue coming into the town, we did everything we could to reduce spending as much as possible. Department spending was reduced to only what was necessary, in many cases, putting off items that we could for at least a one-year period. Highway Department was put on furlough for approximately four weeks at the beginning of the summer, once the restrictions went to only being able to have two workers together at a time. We were able to put them out and gain a little bit, benefit them at that time. The federal government had started allowing the additional money for people on unemployment, so we took advantage of that program as well. Recreation programs obviously were limited, but we were able to open the pool and put in several restrictions with that, limited the number of hours and amount of people that could be in the pool, but we were at least able to...
I'm going to fix it in a minute.
Thank you, Amy. Town Hall was closed with business, for business, in-person business, I should say. We reverted to Dropbox, mail, by appointment. All trainings and activities, for the most part, were moved to Zoom. And the reduced spending, at the end of the day, created a sizable general fund surplus. And the other benefit was that we were able to make sure that we had zero positive COVID cases amongst our town staff, which was very fortunate. We were very fortunate for that. And again, I just want to thank all the employees. It was really day by day and some days was minute by minute. We had some interesting times, but we have experienced staff that has worked together for a number of years, and that is by itself the reason that we prevailed through this so far. So to do a quick budget overview, the general fund budget this year was done a little bit differently. We created this budget using a zero-based budget approach. That basically means that instead of looking at previous year's budgeted amounts, we build each figure from a zero base. This allowed us to cut some savings in some areas and rethink how we are doing business.
The general fund budget this year was done a little bit differently. We created this budget using a zero-based budget approach. That basically means that instead of looking at previous year's budgeted amounts, we build each figure from a zero base. Just allowed us to cut some savings in some areas and rethink how we are doing business.
If everybody could please check if you were muted.
We created this budget using a zero-based budget approach. That basically means that instead of looking at previous year's budgeted amounts, we build each figure from a zero base. Just allowed us to cut some savings.
Did you find them?
I, no, I have no idea.
Okay, somebody may have heard me and muted themselves. Anyways, the joys of our new world.
We're with the technology.
Exactly.
I forgot what you said the first time. You repeated it.
We don't have the creaking floors of people coming in and out, but we do have that. So this did, like I said, this created a savings in a lot of the categories. You'll also notice that the budget does have a little bit, whoop, oh, that the budget does have a little bit of a difference. And we added a comment section, hopefully trying to identify those areas that you might have a question about, trying to explain in each category what's taking place within that line item. And this was all done with an overall goal to our budget. It's a complicated piece of document with a lot of numbers and can be a little bit hard to follow if you're not used to government financing and funding. So we wanted to make a budget that was easier for people to read and understand. So budgets broken down by category. The first category is general government. General government includes administration, zoning, listers, and insurance-type items. So the staff in the administration division, which is basically your front office, was restructured, which allowed us to eliminate one full-time position, which is a lot of the savings that have been realized this year, hopefully numbers that we can carry forward in future budgets. With a grant from the CARES Act, the town clerk's office was able to digitize 40 years of land records. That's going to be available online sometime by the end of March, beginning of April, which is a tremendous benefit for our local attorneys and title searchers. The town hall is open to the public with vault use at this point, but we are still doing by appointment only. That does allow us to, or allows Debbie and Amy to have a little bit of control over how many people are in town hall at one time. I want to note that Wanda Purdy was our lister for ever, I would say probably 20 to 30 years, and Wanda retired this year in June, so I just do want to thank her. She was a tremendous asset to us. We miss her but are very happy that she is enjoying her retirement years. So Val is the town's primary lister at this time, working very hard to stay on top of everything. And the town did decide this year to, on a trial basis, to contract with Nemrick to fill in those other lister functions instead of retaining another employee. So that's a trial basis, so far is working very well, and we are realizing a cost savings in that. Planning zoning office has seen some significant change this year. Michael Normile, our zoning administrator, again, for a number of years, 11 or 12 years, also got done, and so we want to thank Michael for his service. Jill Barger is our new zoning administrator. She was hired a couple months ago, comes with a tremendous skill set that is going to be a great asset to Chester. Jill's primary focus coming out the gate is enforcement of several things, like the salvage yard ordinance and zoning violations in general. So the Select Board this year did agree to allocate in the budget additional hours for this position, so Jill has been slated to 20 hours a week, which is allowing her time to deal with all the things in the zoning department that need to be done. In addition to Jill, we also are very fortunate to have Kathy Hasbrook on our staff. Kathy is support to the zoning administrator and works very closely with the Planning Commission and Development Review Board. She, again, a valuable asset. It'll be, the zoning office is going to become a very strong department over the next year, which is very exciting. It's an integral part to the economic development of the town, so I'm excited to see that develop. Development Review Board, again, has been working very diligently on permitting, conditional uses, subdivisions, and variances throughout the town. Carla Westin has served on the DRB, I don't know how many years, but it's been a very, very long time, and Carla is stepping down as chair this year. So again, I want to thank Carla for all of her work and service to the town in many different capacities over a number of years. The Planning Commission, again, works very hard. That is a very unthankful job. Nobody appreciates the work that they do, but they work very hard, very diligently. Writing of bylaws is tedious. It is difficult. It is not an easy thing to do. You get into the meeting, there are five people needing to agree. It's a very tough job, and I want to thank our Planning Commission for trudging along. We're in a difficult place right now, but that's okay. We're going to work through the process, and there will be a great product on the other end, I'm sure of it. Naomi Johnson has served on our Planning Commission for about 21 years. Naomi is stepping down this year, so again, I'd like to thank Naomi for all of her service to the town in all of these years. Public Safety is our police, fire, ambulance division of town. Very active, exciting. I'm sure everybody has seen, if you've driven on Route 11 towards Springfield, the new Public Safety Building that is being constructed. Move-in day right now is planned for mid-June. Building is coming along very nicely. We're very, very pleased. Those three divisions are very excited to get into their new home. Police Department has been busy. In spite of COVID restrictions on routine traffic stops, the PD has managed to keep themselves out of trouble and working hard. Payroll expenses, I will point out, in the Police Department budget, payroll expenses do appear to be higher than usual. I did have somebody call about this, and I want to point out that that is due to special detail on Route 11 that is offset in the revenue line, so that is not an expense that's direct to the taxpayers. So I did have a couple of questions about that, so I want to make that clear to anybody who might be reviewing that budget. What else is new is in the Police Department, you'll see a line item as their contribution to the capital plan. Capital plan expenses this year have been broken down by department, better reflects the cost of each department in town. So some of the budgets you're going to see up, but it's probably because the capital contribution is actually being shown in that department. Fire Department responded to 175 calls this year. Details of all three of the public safety reports, or budgets, I'm sorry, are in the town report. I encourage you to read those. They talk in detail about what those three services did in the town. Fire Department budget remains very similar to 2020, and again, items purchased through capital and bond plan are now reflected in their budget. Ambulance responded to 370 calls total in 2020. Again, for details, page 45 of the town report addresses the ambulance. Also remains stable, no increase. And I would like to point out that all of the public safety departments this year took advantage of a lot of the PPE grants that came about through the CARES Act program. We were able to utilize a lot of that money in these three divisions, which obviously ends up in a tax savings. Public Works, Public Works is Public Works. It includes highway and cemetery. Highway had a very busy year this year. Started out their year being out for a month, which put all of their work having to still be done in a much shorter period of time, but I believe they've accomplished everything they really needed to in 2020. 2020, 21 winter is challenging, as I'm sure everybody is realizing. We haven't had a typical Vermont winter in a number of years, and 2020 decided to bring that. So we ask you to be patient. These storms have been unusual and a little harder to take care of, so thank you for your patience on that. I would like to put a plug in here. My Highway Director has mentioned this to me in the past couple days. As weather warms up, we're going to start entering mud season, and for people that maybe are new to town and even those who are not new to town, a reminder that two to three inches of mud, as Graham Kennedy put on Facebook, two to three inches of mud is annoying, but it's passable. We can't put highway trucks out all the way out dirt roads. We'd lose our road. So just be patient. Mud season is a fifth season in Vermont. It's a tough one. If you have questions, you know, please, again, feel free to call town hall, but just remember to hang in there, those of us who live on dirt roads. So the Highway Department recognized a large surplus at the end of 2020. Has to stay within the Highway budget, so you'll see that offsetting in the revenue line. It was due primarily to reduced spending, also, as well as some additional state aid money that was sent. If you look at the overall budget, Highway is actually down. There are transfers this year for the first time to the bond plan, bonds that were previously approved at town meeting, and this is the first year of payments. So it looks like a much larger contribution. Overall, Budget is actually, Highway is actually down $200,000 between expenses and revenue. Renovations to the Highway Garage slated to begin in June, completed by early November, so I know they'll be happy to get into their new space. Town is hoping to obtain our Act 250 permit on the gravel extraction operation very soon. We had one little hurdle we had to overcome, but that has, we've dealt with that issue, hoping to have our permit soon. Intent is to clear, put in the roads, ready for clearing and extraction sometime in 2021. Benefits of that gravel operation will hopefully reflect in the budget of 2022. That is our goal. Recreation, the Rec Department was forced to be very creative in 2020, and Matt was able to accomplish that. Many of the camps and programs that we typically have, we weren't able to this year. Matt did a great job of coming up with one-on-one skills sessions, small groups, gatherings, maybe something that he continues going forward. It was quite popular, and you'll see that the Rec budget is relatively flat. A few changes, some of the camps and various programs have been merged just to make the budget easier to read. One big change you'll see is that payroll for the lifeguards was moved from the facilities' budget to the operating budget. His overall budget is not up, but it kind of shows that way because a large item was moved from one to the other. Which brings me up to, we created a kind of a department within the town. The facilities are all together. This is your library, town hall, recreation, facility... are all together. This is your library, Town Hall, recreation, facilities, historic buildings, and the new public safety building has been added. You'll see that the library budget is up slightly to provide a stipend to full-time employees for health insurance. This is something that is being split with the library. That a portion comes out of their expenses as well. The Town Hall budget shows an increase due to additional cleaning services that we've needed here at Town Hall. Excuse me, now that we have eliminated position, there's not time for us to do the cleaning. So we have hired a service. And additional work here to the second floor of Town Hall, as well as when police department moves out of this building, the conference room is going to go back downstairs the way it always used to be. So there is a little bit of work involved in that. The rec budget for facilities includes a screening of a boundary line at the pinnacle, as well as some repairs to the skate park. And a new parking area was created by the ice rink this year. Final touches will be completed in '21. And a new sign made by Marco Ghetto was installed down there as well this year. Public Safety Building has been included. Showing estimate for a six-month operation. We will not be until mid-June. And also includes some one-time move-in expenses that we're Revitalization budget, excuse me, shows an increase for several reasons. This is our largest increase in the budget, actually. The SRDC fees, which were normally in zoning, have been moved to this department. There have been additional funds added for the marketing efforts that we have been working on. And the historic facilities line was increased. That was increased because we are going to be repairing the plaster ceiling at the Academy Building. It is, we were awarded a grant to replace the western slope of the roof this year. It's match money for that. And there is some additional work at Yosemite that we will be doing this year. So the town ended the year with an overall combined surplus of $335,000. We are proposing that this surplus be used to pay some expenses so that we don't have to add them to the capital plan. So $200,000 to pay for the match for the Depot Street sidewalk project, which we are hoping will begin construction this year. $41,000 to purchase this year's cruiser. That will be purchased outright. $72,000 to be added to the fund balance. A recommendation of the auditor to have a fund balance of about $500,000. Right now, with this $72,000, that would put us about 330, so on our way. The reason for that fund balance is really to help with cash flow. This is the first time in a very long time. We're at the beginning of March, and we have not needed a tax anticipation note. But we're doing some things differently with the way we pay bills. But this fund balance is what helps us not have to do that. And we're in a good financial position right now. So it's definitely beneficial to have that. And then $20,000 to be transferred to the reserve fund. That reserve fund will be coming back to the voters in a special meeting sometime this year. So the transfer would not be taking place until after the voters had established the reserve fund and understood the parameters around that. And we're currently working with the auditors on the best way to have a reserve fund and to go with that. Again, if you just joined Zoom and are not muted, if you could mute yourself, that would be helpful. Thank you. So the capital plan, bond plan have been combined this year into one plan. The plan that is in the town report shows the current spending, past spending, current spending, and the proposed, and 2021 proposed debt payments. So the only capital purchase being financed in 2021 is the purchase of the dump truck financed for five years. That is an article that you'll be voting on tomorrow. Sidewalks and cruiser are shown in there, but they are being paid outright. They would not be financed. And there is one bond, $250,000 paving bond that's on a seven-year repayment schedule. That paving is for Popple Dungeon and Lover's Lane, and I think a section of Cavendish Road, and a section of Cavendish Road. The capital plan does show, you will see on there, it does show a fund balance. We recognized a fund balance in the capital plan this year of $135,000. And proposing we not use that this year, but that we kind of let it ride. And we have a couple of peak years coming, '22 and '23. If we can kind of hang on to that, until then, it would certainly help lessen the amount that we need to transfer or raise in taxes. So we're kind of leaving that here for right now. Water and sewer budgets, I wanted to just touch base really quickly. These are not budgets that the taxpayers vote on. These are set and established by the select board, but they are a critical part of the town's infrastructure. Both departments, I just want to give a quick highlight. Both departments have positive growing fund balances, which are great. That is money to be used for upcoming projects that we have. Primary ones for water is we're looking at a secondary well that's being considered. And for sewer, we'll be looking at sewer plant upgrades over the next couple of years. And hopefully, funding for that will be able to take place either through grants or through the accumulated fund balance that we have in both of those. So just a quick summary, 2021 budget reflects, it does reflect a slight decrease. Utilizes the $335,000 surplus earned in 2020 to pay capital expenses, eliminating the need for extensive financing. And this budget was developed balancing, we feel balancing the needs of the town with the financial impact to the taxpayers. We certainly kept that in mind. And I am asking for the voters to support this budget.
Julie, thank you. So that is the presentation by the town manager of the financial items for our town budget. This is an opportunity now for questions to be asked. And we remind you that if you want to ask a question, please use the raise hand feature and wait to be called on. And the raise hand feature is at the bottom of your screen. And when you are called on, please state your name. And while we certainly invite you to ask the questions, there's not going to be any debate. We can't change anything, but it's an opportunity to learn more and make your inquiry. We have about 61 people on Zoom. Multiplying that by the families, that means about 180 people, perhaps. So enjoy the opportunity, and remember, there may be others who want to ask questions as well. So are there any questions? Tim Roper.
Hi, thank you. This is just a curiosity question. Is there a location determined for the proposed second well at this point? Thank you.
Yep. It's going to be, hopefully, it's going to be near the current well, in the same aquifer. It's either that or updating the Canal Street well, which doesn't look feasible, but we're going to look into it.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? There being no other questions indicated, then we're going to move from Articles 2 through 5, which are the money articles, and continue with the remainder of the articles, reminding you that what you are, having presented to you, will be voted on article by article tomorrow at the polling places, the place. And each article will have a yes-no vote. So continuing with the warning, we're going to Article 6, to see if the town will vote to exempt from municipal and education taxes for a period of five years, 100,000 of the fair, 100% of the fair market value of lands and buildings occupied by Chester Rod and Gun Club. That's Article 6. Does anyone have a question?
Bill? It's me, Julie, hands. Wanda used to stand up and do this. So Debbie accumulated the information this year. The assessed value for the Chester Rod and Gun Club is $183,300. The education tax, the total tax between education and municipal that is being asked to be exempted is $4,323.13.
Can't change anything, but it's an opportunity to learn more and make your inquiry. We have about 61 people on Zoom. Is this a question coming?
No, it's coming back. Somebody, yep, it's gone. They muted themselves. We're all set.
So that's Article 6 with an explanation from Julie. Is there a question about Article 6?
Bill, I had a quick one. Julie, when you said that number, that $4,323, that's the total for, per year, per five years?
That is per year.
Per year.
That is per year, for a five-year period.
So when we forgive the local taxes and the school taxes, we have to make up the school taxes?
That's correct. The education portion, we actually have to pay to the state. Yep.
Is there anyone here from the Chester Rod and Gun Club to speak to this issue or to make any comments?
Can I interject, Mr. Chairman? I think what we've decided, and we'll certainly have further discussion, we're not going to ask people to stand to defend or present on their particular articles because not everybody who is representative of these money articles has the opportunity or is available to speak. So we think that in all fairness, the presence or absence of a person to speak towards a particular article should not be interpreted one way or the other. So if there are questions to be asked, we invite the questions and responses, but we don't need to invite someone to speak in support of the article.
But, so are we allowed to ask that person questions?
You can ask if there's a question. You can raise the question.
Thank you, Bill.
So returning to Article 6 and continuing with the development of the protocols of the town meeting via Zoom. Are there further questions, or any questions regarding Article 6? There being none, we move to Article 7, to see if the town will vote to exempt from municipal and education taxes for a period of five years, 100% of the fair market value of lands and buildings occupied by Green Mountain Softball, Inc. Julie, do you have a?
I do. So Green Mountain Softball League. Their 2020 assessment was $77,800. Their total taxes, municipal and education, is $1,834.91.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a question about Article 7? There being no question about Article 7, we'll move to Article 8, to see if the town will vote to exempt from municipal and education taxes for a period of five years, 100% of the fair market value of lands and buildings occupied by Olive Branch Lodge.
2020 assessment was $166,600, combined tax of $3,929.26.
Thank you. Is there a question, are there questions about Article 8?
Tim Roper has a question.
Tim Roper.
I'm not familiar with Olive Branch Lodge. Could someone please explain what that organization is? Thank you.
Olive Branch Lodge is the home of the Masons. It's located on Main Street, as you know, near the Fullerton and the quilt shop, the old drugstore. So when we talk about the Olive Branch Lodge, that is the Masonic Lodge on Main Street.
Thank you for clarifying.
Further questions? Article 9, shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $4...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Thomas Amston, presence in the room?
Mr. Amston?
You're muted, Mr. Amston.
Good evening. Tom Amston from Chester. I'm the current sitting secretary of Olive Branch Lodge, and I would be happy to answer any questions or if there's anything that I can help facilitate with what we're asking the town to do for the next five years.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question about the Article 8 exempting Olive Branch There being none? Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to Article 9. Shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $4,000 to Meals on Wheels of Greater Springfield, Inc., for continued support and services to the citizens of the town of Chester in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? This is not an exemption question, so stands on its own. However, does anyone have a question or comment about Article 9? There being no questions or comments on Article 9, we'll move to Article 10. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,500 to support the Chester Forward Works for Independence Day in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Does anyone have a question or a comment on Article 10? There being none, we'll move on. I'll remind you that when you vote tomorrow, not surprisingly, your paper ballot will look a lot like the warning. Each article will be presented on the ballot. At the end, you'll have a selection of yes or no. We move to Article 11. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $13,807 to help support the home health, maternal and child health, and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by the Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Are there any questions or comments about Article 11? Article 10 and 11, we've done, move to Article 12. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $3,044 to help support outpatient mental health and substance abuse services by the Staff of Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services, HCRS, in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a comment or question about Article 12? Article 13, shall the town appropriate the sum of $3,040 to Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFC, to assist Chester in responding to the emergency needs of the community in providing all available and applicable services to families and individuals in need in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Are there any questions or comments about Article 13? Article 14, shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $900 to the Women's Freedom Center for general budget support to provide services to women and their children who are experiencing emotional, physical, and/or sexual abuse and our residents of the town in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a question or comment about Article 14? Article 15, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the support of Senior Solutions, formerly Council on Aging for Southeastern Vermont, to help to support seniors and their families who are trying to remain at home and not be placed in a nursing home in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Are there comments or questions about Article 15? Are there comments or questions about Article 15? Article 16.
Hold up, Bill.
We have a question.
James C.
James Steed?
C.
Steed's.
I'm the James C. that came in early. I just wanted to just make one comment to thank the community schools, especially Catherine Fogg in Chester, Andover, and Cavendish Elementary, as well as Green Mountain Union High School, Marcia Dockham and Krista Valenti, the art teachers who worked with Senior Solutions to put together Valentine's Day cards to our seniors that have been in their homes for a year and are very fearful of this pandemic situation. So I just wanted to thank them. They made their day, and the Meals on Wheels people delivered Valentine's cards, over 300, to our senior citizens. So thanks to school systems in Chester.
Thank you. Are there additional questions or comments about this article?
Bill, is that Jim Collins? Was it James Collins? I don't know who James C. is.
James C., is this Mr. Collins?
This is Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Debbie was asking.
So Mr. Collins, who just had a birthday spoke, and we move to Article 16. We still don't lose the touch of town meeting.
No, that's right.
Article 16. Shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $2,250 for the support of the current, the current, capital C, operated by Connecticut River Transit, Inc., to provide transit services to the residents of the town of Chester in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Article 16. Is there a question or a comment about this article? Article 17. Shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $800 to support Windsor County Mentors for youth mentoring services provided to children in Windsor County in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a question or comment about Article 17?
Patricia DeDonna has her hand raised.
You're welcome to speak.
Hi, my name is Patricia DeDonna, and I just want to support this agency for the work they do, that supporting mentors that are adult volunteers who work with youth, particularly in Chester, Cavendish, Andover, and Springfield. They do good work.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Article 18. Shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $400 to Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center of Windsor County to develop opportunities for people age 55 and older to positively impact the quality of life in the community of Chester through volunteer service in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a question or comment about Article 18? There being none, we'll move to the next article. Article 19. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,800 toward the support of Community Cares Network of Chester and Andover, Inc., a nonprofit organization which provides services to senior citizens, helping them to stay in their homes longer safely in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a question or comment about this article? There being none, we will move to Article 20, to see if the town of Chester will appropriate the sum of $3,000 to assist in the services of Chester Andover Family Center for individuals and families in need in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there a question or a comment about this article?
Stephanie has something she would like to say.
Stephanie Mahoney might be on the line. Stephanie, is that you?
Yes, it is me. I'm now in focus. I just want to thank everyone who has continued to donate to our food shelf and thrift shop. And thanks to all the Chester Andover Family Center volunteers for our food shelf and our thrift shop. We couldn't be doing the work we do without all of their help. As Julie said earlier, with COVID, it's been an interesting year, and we immediately put COVID protocols into place at our food shelf and our thrift shop so we could continue to be open and serve the people that we need to be serving, and also to continue with our thrift shop. So thank you very much. We really appreciate all of your support.
Are there further questions or comments about this article? There being none, we'll move to Article 21. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Neighborhood Connections, Inc., to cover the cost of providing services in Chester in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a question or a comment about this article?
Bill, is that the last one? You're on 21?
Article 21 is the last one, yes.
If there's no questions or comments, I just had something that I would like to say regarding all those articles.
Yes.
It's been, it's different this year, having town meeting on Zoom where we can't be face-to-face with everybody and have these discussions and talk about all these organizations that we're going to be voting on tomorrow. They're all our local charities, they're our local organizations. They have a direct effect on our neighbors and the lives of our neighbors in our town. And I hope that everybody tomorrow at the ballot box strongly supports these organizations and charities. It's a little difficult not to hear them speak and talk and have a conversation with them, but I think they're all deserving of our support, and they make our town what it is. And when it comes to charities and organizations like these, I always think local is a better way to go, and these are definitely organizations that affect us locally and our neighbors and people that we work with all year long. So I hope everybody strongly supports these organizations.
Thank you. We are at the end of the articles on the warning, and I would invite anyone who wants to make a comment. This would be an appropriate time.
Kathy from Green Mountain RSVP said thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Kathy. So thank you all for attending. We're about ready to adjourn, and as we do, we will remind you tomorrow is the day to vote. It's 9:00 a.m. here in the town hall until 7:00 p.m. Everything we presented tonight on the warning will be on the ballot, so please come out. There being no further business tonight, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The motion's been made, and we'll vote. Everybody here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you until the next meeting.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, thank you, Bill.
That wasn't the same at all.
So we're still on, so enjoy.